All of our HSS budgets. And of that, around 2 million is kind of general fund and maybe it's a effort, general relief, the public guardian cost, those kind of things. So, a lot of money coming in, a lot of money going out. There's, we're looking at about 8.4 million in assistance payments. And most of that, about 8.4 million in assistance payments, and that does not include GR, that's just the welfare assistance, which would be CAL Works, which is the lowest amount, foster care, group homes. Except for the group homes, the foster care payments are almost all local, so it's a significant amount of money that stays right in the community. Let's see, what else will we talk about? We have a lot of stuff going on. As I talked a little bit to you about before, we generated about $570,000 in MAH and intergovernmental transfer funds this last year. So, we should get checks in a couple of weeks. And so, one of the things we plan with that, and then we'll be back to talk about that. I know Mr. Chapman in particular is interested in what we're planning to do with intergovernmental transfer, IGT funds. But, one of the things that we, one of the highlights is we're planning to hire another public health program coordinator and to do a program called Help Me Grow, which is basically like a live, online, the end of the phone resource director. And I know we've all had the luxury of paper resource directors in the past. It costs a lot of money to produce, and everybody's like, oh, who's got the money? Who can do it? Who's got the staff to make all the phone calls and update everything? And this will be an online person who will actually do that. At the end of that phone would be a person who responds to whoever wants to call. So, if a doctor is seeing particular behavior in a child, and they want to know, is there anyone in town I can refer them to? That person will, number one, know who to refer them to. Number two, may actually take the referral, him or herself, and follow up and make sure that the family gets connected with the services that are available, which will include our Family Solutions Program, Behavioral Health Services, Public Assistance, Public Health, all the things that we offer. We're very happy to have Jenna and the CDPG program with us already. That's proving to be kind of a nice fit for us. It was very interesting, recently the Wendell water system issue came up. I don't know if you heard about that? That they were trying to turn off the Wendell water after several years of Union Pacific just having it on for them. And we were able to offer them that if they run into a bump needing some funding to do that, that that's a possibility with CDPG, especially under the drought programs this year. And so, we're going to be back next week with closeout grant and to talk a little bit about some of the things that happened under one of our TA grants, micro enterprise TA grants. And there's a lot of good stuff going on there. And so, it's been a nice fit. We're looking to hire a half-time fiscal person for that. And when the IGT and MAH funding comes in, that person will be a full-time position with a half-time to go to public health, because with all the MAH time surveys, our fiscal officer needs some help over there. So, we'll be back. And we're always back in the fall or late, late, late fall, early winter with mid-year adjustments anyway, because we don't always know where our funding's going to be until we get the final allocations late in the fall. We reorganized our adults services unit. So, now that is in-home supportive services, adult protective services, public guardian, and as we've talked about, probably soon, public administrator. One of the positions we've asked for this year is a senior account clerk to help manage that. We think that a senior account clerk will be able to help offset the fiscal duties of the public guardian office and public administrator office, along with the senior admin clerk that's there. And we, we don't know what it might cost, because there hasn't been a lot of history in the public administrator program. But we think that those two positions and our social workers, that we should be able to turn over public administrator cases faster and maybe not even need any general fund support with that position. But we won't know until we get into it and figure out what we're doing. But it's not totally unknown to us. Our public guardian was closing out those cases for public guardian clients in the past. So, it's, it's, we know how to do it. It's just going to be a little broader than we've done it in the past. And I'm, we've got stuff going on in behavioral health, as Mr. Chapman can attest to, and stuff going on in public health. We're doing some reorganization, getting ready to be accredited. And we're continuing to move toward integration in behavioral health, but not with that, but with medical. And so, there's just a lot of stuff going on, and I'll be back here on a regular basis to let you know what we're doing and what else we need and where we're going to get the money from.
Yeah, the bigger help has really, my career has really been best I've seen here in 40 years.
A lot of exciting stuff going on, and I'm very happy to work there. I was telling somebody, and of course, John had the first mic level, but I have probably one of the most interesting jobs in the county. I can stand up here and we can talk about mental health and come back the next week and talk about septic inspections, so how many people could do that?
No, no, I think Gary's going to.
I have a question. Oh, you know, you used to take care of veteran services.
Yes.
And since then, it got switched over to the, to the board here, even though I didn't agree with that time. So, have you taken a chance to look at the Fund 100 and the general fund portion to make sure that the veterans were doing things properly and things were done right? Have you taken the time to look at that?
I haven't looked at the budget, but I, Kathy and I have talked quite a bit about, in particular, the Veteran Peer Specialist Program.
Does that part still kind of functions under you?
Yes. Well, I mean, we're providing the training, and we've been providing support for them. We did a contract with Rudine Monti, thanks to Tom and Tim Holliver bringing her here. And she is, has been coming back on a regular basis. We've been supporting that activity. She's been meeting with not only the Veteran Peer Specialist staff, but with Veteran Service Officer staff, not only from Lassen, but from MODOC and Plumas, to kind of help them form a support group, because like a lot of social workers, they're experiencing secondary trauma. When veterans come in and explain, express their trauma to them, then they get to go home and deal with it, and most of them have their own experiences to deal with. So, it can be kind of hard on them, and Veteran Service Officers are kind of hard to find too. So, we're doing what we can to kind of help all of them, so I'm very happy to do it.
Okay. Because, Richard, I was just curious here, on number 130, you have extra help of $36,000. What's the, what's the extra help for? Is that the?
Tell me where you are.
Okay, Mr. Beth, if you'd like. That's, that's for the Veteran Peer Specialist Program. They're being funded this year with the CAL MESA grant that they got, CAL MHSA, CAL VET Grant, which is $20,000, and then also probably, it sounds like another $16,000 in MAH funding that they generated, so.
Well, is that, this looks like it's come out of the general fund though.
Right. Which budget unit are you?
Uh, 100, oh, budget, oh, 0911.
In section?
In number 6.
Okay. Number 130. Extra help.
Yeah.
I believe that is, we have a full-time VSO, and we have a couple of part-time positions, or extra help positions in the department. Is that correct, Julie?
Last year, in 1415, this current fiscal year, we just closed, they had $42,000 expenditures of extra help. So, they do have a couple of employees or extra help people that are paying from there.
Yeah.
And those are the veteran peer specialists, and so you are, you've got to be transferring funds from.
So, well, we're paying the funds out of the general fund.
Right.
And then there's a general fund revenue from the MAH funding.
MAH and the CAL VET, CAL MESA.
And, yeah, and there's an off, I don't know, fully offset, there's offsetting revenue.
It's on page three of the revenues. Two revenue lines.
Okay, is it the 921?
You have $43,000 and almost $22,000.
Yes, the $43,000, state veterans.
So, they're, we're paying $65,000 plus an additional $36,000 for the extra help?
Yes.
And how much of that extra help is the full time on that?
How much of it is full time?
Or if we need bonus?
There should be 1.5 FTEs.
Yes, so we've got.
And then the rest are extra help.
Yes. So, the VSO and half-time is, is budget within salaries and benefits line. And then, the extra help is what's offset by $43,000 from state veterans, which is the veteran service, veterans service specialists.
Veterans specialists.
Peer specialists.
And the, and MAH reimburses after?
Well, the MAH funding comes to us, and then we are passing it on to the VSO, because they're the departments that are, we keep track of what departments are earning MAH. For instance, probation has joined the MAH scheme, so in the next year, they'll be getting some MAH funding too.
Okay.
So, the 21, if you're looking at the revenue page, the 21844 is the MAH funding portion of it, which would be transferred from Mel's funds. And the $43,000 is from the reimbursement from the state veterans and affairs, from the state.
Okay. And that would include the $20,000 for the county's grant and $23,000, which is the Pittance that she gets from CAL VET to run the office.
Right. And, you know, the position was established irrespective of whether there was any state or federal funding there. I mean, the fact that we get a Pittance, or we get some sort of, is, is great. That's gravy in that respect. I mean, our commitment is to the veterans and providing that basic, because even if it's just one position, it doesn't require peer specialist stuff. So, we've actually been fortunate to expand and provide a higher level of service than otherwise would be the case. But for years, that's always been a position that the county created for its veterans to make sure they get plugged into the various programs that they're eligible for, and that they're not left behind, and that they're not supposed to be homeless and disadvantaged.
And having a half-time veteran service representative, so that the office can stay staff most of the time, and having veteran peer specialists out in the outlined communities to bring veterans in, has really boosted their ability to help veterans. It's been a great partnership.
I don't see a question here.
It does. And I would invite you, Mel, just to look over this, find a funding fund, just to make sure we're, we're doing things right, because we're pretty high. We do our.
Okay. Thank you, Mel.
Thank you.
Probation, do you have anything?
You know, I just wanted to make sure that I noted that I appreciate everybody's support with the funding for probation department. Ms. Regan has been very fair, and I, you know, nobody's ever going to get everything that they want, but I truly believe that Mr. Eden and the board have come up with very fair compromises. The one increase in probation for the full-time deputy probation officer is grant-funded through a grant with Lassen Superior Court for pre-trial services. And the other 0.5 FTE at Junior Hall is an offset in a reduction with our extra help to try to see if hiring a benefited part-time person to provide some of that on-call extra help would work, and we reduce that line within our budget. It's really hard when you run a 24/7 facility, as the sheriff I think also knows and understands and faces some of the same problems. I do believe that, you know, it's just an attempt to try to see if this is something that we can have work within the ACA.
Very easy. Okay.
I'll be quick.
Larry, do you have anything?
Not really, just a man here for questions.
If, Larry?
If you'd be none, thank you.
Well, Larry's here, if I could direct your attention to TAB, hand, 122, 122 budget. I think supervisor Hammond earlier asked about the capital expenditures out of the road fund, and they're detailed there, totaling over $8 million in bridge replacements, road work, et cetera. So, I'd just like to point that out.
Where are we on our bridge replacements and bridge works and stuff?
Yeah, one of them.
We don't all, they don't seem to.
The two makes bridges, 71 and 72, you'll see on the list there.
Yeah.
They're, actually have a bid opening Thursday.
Okay.
So, they're ready to go to construction.
Okay, good.
The next two in line are Long Valley Creek Bridges, 12 and 81. Those we just recently got environmental clearance, so we're asking for, and we just received the right-of-way funding allocation, and we will be getting right-of-way appraisal, we'll be going right-of-way now. I think we're slated for construction, hopefully, next year, so in the fall of '16. Hopefully, we have contact.
I'll write that down.
And then, the next bridges in line, which are probably a year, year and a half, two years out, would be the bridges up in Beaver area, Beaver Creek, in Too Many Sloughes. Those we are currently in environmental phase. If we get that completed around the first of the year, and then we'll be asking for the right-of-way money. The other big project down here, the very bridges, that was the one we just awarded earlier today, Mooney Road, that one, we're just finishing up the construction documents. Hopefully, have that out to bid, probably next month. Probably have to ward that in winter now and start next spring. And the other big one is the STIP overlay. With that, I need to get the CTC to allocate the money. I hope it'll go to CTC in December, get that funding set up, and that'll be a spring job, next spring. That project is Mooney Road from 147 to Westwood, portion of Eagle Lake Road and a portion of Center Road.
Center Road.
Yes.
What part is, what part is Center Road?
We're just going to have to pick out the worst section.
Because basically, from Rockland Street, Rockland Street all the way to CTC, that whole section is.
Yes, we have, we have a large project under STIP and the CTC allocation for Center Road, but it's right now, it's like a three and a half million project, four million, but it's like four years out.
Yeah.
So, this one's just kind of, hopefully, throw, yeah, just trying to throw some right now.
One real, did I keep any phone calls on? I gotta take care of Tom's constituents, the Delphas.
Oh, we've been talking about it a lot. In fact, I talked to Larry about it.
Is there good money in the budget to work on that? Is it something in the coming years?
Delphas is mainly an issue with the grading and, actually, the grading, it gets worse more and to make after.
You fix it and it's bad again.
Yeah. There's a lot of traffic on there.
I don't know. I mean, I keep trying to keep Tom out of trouble, you know, people calling me.
Oh, believe it, they call me.
We, we do have, once we, like you realize, we did a pressing contract last year, got to try to do another contract, a west side pit this year. So, once we get some material, we would like to put some ground on that.
Okay. So, are you trying to do that this year?
I don't know how much we'll get done this year, but we hope to do something.
They're going to bring it up here. Larry, do you have a question, Rick?
Again, Larry, in 115 budget unit 1501. Down there at 6100, you have building improvements. I'm assuming WW is Westwood Library reroute.
Correct.
I mean, we got it, we've rerouted it in 13, or 1213 for $59,000, and we did it again for $50,000, and then last year, you did it again for $33,000, and now we're budgeting $10,000 for it again?
No, this is the, this is the first year the Westwood Library reroute has been in the budget. What you're seeing there is building improvements is the section, and then there's been program project under that. So, it's just the way, we got it entered into the budget this year. Like the last year's money entered that, the 33751, that was Beaver Library Museum, fire damage. That's where the bulk of that money went to. I believe some went to Public Works facility, the restrooms. The prior year, that was, majority was the Public Works restroom. And I believe some went up in the Beaver.
So, in other words, as we, that should be a building improvements, but the Westwood Library reroute is actually going to be $10,000 this year.
That's just one, yeah, that's just one project under that.
Stop showing this for.
It's this year.
Okay. Now, which brings me back to my next point is, is that the pool up there, the electricity is getting built for the pump, in order of all for the, for the second pump. Is that getting taken care of? Is that in the budget this year?
That would be out of our building grounds. I don't know that we are paying for that. We need to give them if you're out of proportion.
We need to get that figured out.
Yeah. If that should be an eligible expense out of our building grounds, 10221 budget, expenses for the 100.
Over on this page, Larry said, under cemetery project, we have this, they have a budget in, and they think, oh, it's under the cemetery budget somewhere else, but the entrance fence there to the old cemetery.
Right, Susanville Cemetery.
Yeah, Susanville Cemetery was crushed by the tree that fell across it.
Right.
Is there, what's the plans for cleaning, to replace them? It's always going to have to be rebuilt.
Right. I've got, I've got $1,000 set aside under the 1800 maintenance line item.
Okay.
And we're working with a student there at Lassen High School, so they would like to do the Lassen.
Did the Lassen, which turned out looking really nice. We finally got that, and then just soon as we got that one fixed, this other one, which had been there for 100, over 100 years at least, a lot more, got taken out by a tree in the windstorm, so that's really sad. So, I'm glad to know that's, I figured it wasn't in this budget, but it had to be somewhere.
Do you have a question, Bill? On your end, thank you, Larry.
Could I ask Larry a question?
Okay.
I'm sorry, Larry, I unremained here. I, I know you know that Belfast Road is quite traveled during the hunting season.
Yes.
All right? And, and also, that the bridge itself, it's got, I don't know what they're calling, but they're bolts that stand up about that high on the bridge, the whole.
On the bridge deck?
Yeah, they're there. And then, on the south side of the bridge, yesterday, the asphalt had been hit hard right against the abutment of the bridge, wood bridge, portion of the bridge.
Okay.
I, I think it's a hazard, but, but anyway, but there's a lot more traffic going out there this time of year than ordinarily. And then another thing, I went down Leavitt Lake Road a lot, because there was a fire out there on 827 last Tuesday or so.
Right.
And I was hurrying up, and I noticed that, that the bridge that is to the south is nice and wide, that connects up to 395, but there's a bridge in the middle of Leavitt Road that all of a sudden narrows down.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering if, I was scared, because I was passing a truck, and I thought, am I going to be able to stay on my side of the bridge, and he's going to stay on his side of the bridge? And what is the criteria when you have such a narrow bridge like that, three parents?
That one actually has just made the eligible list, and we'll be trying to get that on the funding list.
Okay.
And the other two you just talked about, we replaced a couple of years ago, three years ago. And then, that smaller one just has made the, made the list.
Good. Thank you.
It'll probably be a few years before we get the funding set up, but at least it's okay.
Shouldn't that be prison mitigation funds?
That'd be nice.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Any other department heads have any questions for us here? I don't think Kenny House has anything going on. He's probably already overfunded, so it's a good point. Uh, May Sherman, you've been here all day. I'm going to give you a chance, give him the tournament speed.
Actually, you have no choice.
I have no choice. Yeah, I'll just tell you this, I'll thank you for what you have done for us, and we will try to apply by making matching funds somehow. It is very difficult. It's kind of like Dean said, we'll go, come walk in some of our shoes and see how difficult it is to find funding for these sites. We need to have, I understand, one thing we do need to work on, and which we talked about just while I was in the meeting just before I came here, so, of the communities buying into our sites. We need to have the communities buying into them, and they haven't really done that. And I think when we do, we might find some more.
Yeah, well, originally, when this whole thing came to life, about probably 12, 15 years ago, and the county provided big funding, it was like $100,000 a year, I think we did that for three years, to get the infrastructure up and placed and get the buildings and stuff. And it was not with the intent that it'd be ongoing, it was.
Yeah, and I understand that, too.
And it was, it was to give the communities a chance to do the buy-in, to develop mechanisms to contribute. It wasn't like it was going to be 100% county or 100% the community, but it was going to be a partnership. And after that first three-year period of time, the amount of buy-in from the community was very marginal, but the county funding expired, it sunsetted, it was reduced. And it was at that time when Kevin Manal and Mallady and others stepped in and backfilled using some program funding, but now you're dealing with limited, and it's not discretionary issues for anything under the sun. It has to be focused on what the funding is earmarked for. And I realize that that creates, you know, a lot of constraints on the community. So, and I think when the budget committee called, Mr. Chairman, and we discussed that issue, is that, you know, we're not adverse to the county, you know, of being a partnering off-the-table, we've been there all along, but we need to get back to what that original, what was originally sold by the people who promoted the development of the family resource center, which I think is an amazing and important part of our community. I don't want to see us lose those, was that there had to be this partnership with the community. And, and I think there's a lot of volunteerism that comes in. There's no question, they, they come to the place there, but there has to also be, you know, some of the nonprofits and others in the community that, just like churches, I mean, churches exist because, not because the government funds them, but because the people are involved in the church, invested in the church, that they, they belong to. So, we have to kind of come up with some of that element, and I think with that, and hopefully, maybe with this matching thing that's been worked out, it gives an opportunity for the community to have a more meaningful involvement, to make it their family resource centers, and not the county's or whoever. And, and if it's going to be a county funded thing, then, then finally, we have a high reward, we just move the family resource centers and wrap them on, and they're just part of whatever county department, have it be responsible. And it's a taxpayer thing, and the people who hate the government don't have to go to the family resource center, and the people who love the government can go and spend all their time there.
Thank you. Can I ask May a question? What kind of resources do you have to find these matching funds?
Well, grants, maybe, making up for certain.
Community fundraisers.
And, and we, we have had those, yeah.
And, and I think you take that and you use that to match, to qualify this here, so there's a nexus to it, and.
And then, when you guys decide what our matching funds are going to entail, they'll help us too.
What I would suggest regarding that, we didn't have a lot of detailed discussion at the budget committee meetings about what would qualify for match, or if it's a dollar for dollar match, or one for two, or something like that. I would, if Mel's willing, ask her to work with the family resource center to come up with some criteria for what would suffice for match and what the, maybe the appropriate matching model is.
You know, the purpose is, they need, you know, financial resources, and so, any kind matching, you know, is, that's not what the intent is, because you're trying to create cash, so that, you know, the resource centers have some operating monies that are discretionary in nature and not categorically funded and restricted. And so, you know, we're, the 10,000 is our basis, that's no question, that's already there. So, to generate this extra money, you know, what we decided to do is, if we put in 10,000 and they could generate 10,000 from local fundraising efforts, then that gives the local family resource center now $20,000 additional dollars to go on top of. And now, you've got $30,000 to work with, and to achieve some of the goals that they were expressing by asking for the additional funding. So, it really comes down to is just how important it is to the various communities that they value having the flexibility of resource centers being there. So, I mean, it's all said and done with, in essence, two, for the $2 that the county is putting into the pocket of the community. Somewhere in the community, it could be church groups, it could be, you know, Rotary Clubs or whatever it may be, it could be bait sales by.
Drift stores.
Drift stores, whatever they do in terms of generating additional monies, that's the money that becomes their operating dollars to work with. operating dollars to work with.
So far, Thrift Service brings in five hundred dollars next month, you're going to match that for me?
Well, that would be possible to be the.
Sort of what I'm asking, yeah.
Can I be a part of the discussion when you discuss?
I think it's, that's an item that I would ask Mel to come back to some recommendation. We'll have a discussion.